Good evening. This regular meeting of the Mount Horvare School District Board of Education will come to order. We'll call Danny. I see Danny. Diana.
Here.
Jeff. Here. Jessica.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
And I am obviously here. Dr. Salerno, can you certify that this meeting has been properly noticed? Thank you. Let's join together in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have a volunteer to read the district's mission statement.
Sure, this is Kimberly.
Kimberly, go ahead.
Mount Horvare School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Kimberly. Moving on to item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any revisions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the presented agenda. So move.
Second, this is Bangena.
Jessica's moved and Diana has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the October 5th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Motion to approve. Jeff has moved the approval of the minutes.
Second, Kimberly.
And Kimberly has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the regular meeting minutes of October 5th, 2020 are approved. Item 2C, approval of the October 29th, 2020 special meeting minutes.
This is Jessica, so moved.
Thank you, Jessica. Jeff and Jeff have seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the special meeting minutes from the October 19th, 2020 meeting are approved. Item 3A, school news.
She's on the call tonight, I think I saw. What do you mean, Katie?
There she is.
Hi, everybody. So first off, the first thing I wanted to talk about was the annual DECA Trigger Can Community Service Event. Obviously, this year, it's going to look a little bit different. There are drop-off boxes stationed at the high school and the PC, and anybody can go and donate non-perishable food items that you may have laying around in your kitchen to local food pantries in need. The hours are 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday this week, with Friday being the last day that you guys can donate. I'm looking forward to seeing how many donations we can get this year. I really hope it's, I really hope it's good because there's been a lot of discussion around this event and a lot of planning, so I'm really excited to see how it turns out. And secondly, if there's any students or parents of high school students on the call tonight, there is an informational meeting this Wednesday at 10:30 in the morning for any students who may be interested in pursuing a healthcare-oriented career. Basically, there's a new program starting at the high school. It's a series of sessions dedicated to inviting local healthcare professionals to speak and educate students on their careers. So any students who may be interested in pursuing careers in nursing, physical therapy, the traditional medical track, anything like that, those students are welcome to join me and my friend Lily Jungles at 10:30 in the morning on Wednesday. And that is all.
Awesome report. Thank you very much, Kate. Dr. Salerno, do you have other school news?
Yeah, well, Kate, first of all, thank you. I know that you were the intitist behind many of the things that you just spoke up here today. You and our young friends, friends along with the DECA. So thank you so much for your good work in this effort. Folks can drop off items at either the primary center or the high school if they'd like to help out with the Trigger Can Program. Last week was National School Lunch Week, and we're so grateful to everybody who has helped make our transition to providing foods to our families. Both breakfast and lunches Wednesdays tend to be a pick-up and drop-off day. We are fortunate in that the federal government has approved a continuation of that program through the end of August of 2021. And so even those students who may be returning in the hybrid model, K2 here in a couple of weeks, they will be able to take advantage of that breakfast and lunch program as well. And also wanted to, speaking of food, I want to also extend a note of gratitude to one of our students, Isaac, who has been working with Stutter Ridge Farms to provide some fresh produce along by the cemetery, actually. Every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday afternoon, he's been doing that from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. But like all good things, it must come to an end. This Wednesday is your last chance to get some really great fresh produce and then, of course, visit with our dear Isaac, just an absolute amazing young man. And I know that just spending a few minutes with him will be good for him, but also good for your soul as well. And then lastly, how could I forget my friends in Club Interact? These are students who got up at 8:00 this morning, about 35 strong, all dressed in their Halloween costumes from the high school, and we started making cards. Cards for all of the elderly who live in our nursing homes here in Mount Horvare. Our roller coaster right now, there's very, usually we can reverse trick-or-treat in this time of year. Obviously, we can't do that. So we made cards, and we've got hand lotions that have been purchased and a few candies, and we're going to have those dropped off. These are students getting up early in the morning in order to do something good for people about themselves. And Kate, I know you know all about that because you're a special person in your own right. How fortunate we are to be in this community. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on now to item 3B, citizens' comments. Those who wish to speak should text their first and last name and their address to 608-250-9166. And apparently, folks know the number already because we have six or seven who have lined up, lined up as it is. So let's, let's take it from the top of the list.
Now, here's a new name to Mount Horvare, Colleen Nessine. Colleen, are you on the call?
I am. How are you?
Good to hear your voice.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I anticipate that you're going to hear from a lot of athletes tonight, and they will be asking for a chance to return to their team and high school coaches, something they haven't done since last spring. For some of these students, athletics is a way of life. It is what a lot of them in their minds depend on in order to be successful. I want you to know that I am 100% behind their wish for a chance to return to the high school. I'm not asking for giant pep rallies or for standing-room-only gyms full of Viking fans. I'm simply asking for a small step in getting the kids back to their way of life. I'm asking for a chance to follow the Public Health Madison Dane County Guidelines so that we can bring small groups of winter athletes together if they choose to participate. You may ask why winter athletes. As of right now, our fall teams are just postponed. As you know, our Badger Conference knew that it was best to make changes to the fall schedule, so now Mount Horvare is one of those schools that hopes to compete in a fall-to-spring alternative season. Our new fall schedules are done. I've started working on the hiring of officials and event staff, and if allowed by Dane County and our district, we hope to have that fall-to-spring season start in March. Right after that, our spring teams will hope to compete in a somewhat condensed and altered spring season that would take us through June. I want you to know that I would love nothing more than to be working late into June as our teams compete for the gold trophy. So that leads us to the winter season. Canceling the spring athletic season of 2020 last April was the worst thing that I have had to do as an athletic director. I know my hands were tied due to all of the unknowns, but I felt like I had let the entire school community down when we pulled that plug on their season, and I don't want to do that again. The WIAA approved new parameters for the winter season, including the reduction of weeks, which means that we begin in mid-November and we will conclude the end of February. So that's not a lot of time compared to the normal winter season. I'm hoping that we can give the winter athletes something in that window. Once we succeed with our first groups, we could bring back other small groups as well. I don't know what the winter season will look like. Only one can guess with this pandemic. However, I do know that we can bring the athletes back, and we can do it safely. It may only be small practice cohorts for now, but it's a start. I won't go through all the many reasons why we think this is important because I'll let the student athletes tell you that tonight. Please allow us to learn from surrounding schools and start to plan. We know that plans can change, and we can be flexible and adapt. I have all the confidence in the world in our coaching staff and the amazing young athletes that deserve this. If given the opportunity by the board tonight, my first three steps would include, number one, meeting with other Dane County athletic directors to discuss public health rules and planning ideas. Number two, meeting with each head coach to plan for small group activities that would meet the public health order. And number three, informing families of the strict rules and guidelines that they would have to follow and would be required by them and their child. We can manage our kids and staff within our high school programs. By allowing them back to the building, we would be able to connect with them, keep them active, and help ward off the other adverse effects of inactivity. Then who knows, maybe our athletes will take that opportunity and teach the rest of the community how to manage it as well. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Colleen.
And welcome to Mr. John Elliott. Good evening, Mr. Elliott.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Great. Well, thank you. And Colleen, appreciate your comments too. I got just a short, brief, and to kind of tag on to what Colleen said. So good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board, the administration, and the parents listening about the issue of, you know, returning our kids back to school and also returning back to extracurricular activities and the importance of those. I know this is a really emotional issue at this time, and everyone, I think everybody wants to get our kids back into school and participating in school activities. I also hope that we can model and engage in civil discussions and treat each other with kindness and respect when we have these discussions. I've seen a lot of negative reactions and false assumptions about our board members and our administration around sending our kids back to school and participating in activities. And I think it's just unfair for us to assume that our board and our administrators don't care about the health and safety and well-being of our students and staff. I think Colleen showed how our staff cares about our student athletes and our students in getting them back into school. So regardless of the reason that you ran for the school board, I know you all care about the health, safety, and well-being of our students and the staff and the coaches and the professionals who support them. So I really support our returning our kids back to school when it's safe and returning our kids back to extracurricular activities and wholeheartedly agree with what Colleen said in putting those restrictions in place and safety measures in place so we can get our student athletes some opportunity to participate. I realize that this is not an easy answer, and it's not a black-and-white issue. I myself, in my professional life, have had to make decisions that affect the safety and well-being of parents and kids and my staff that I send out in the field. So there are no easy answers, and then we know different rules apply based on the county that we live in. But as a former school board member in another district, I faced difficult decisions in the past, but nothing as challenging as that you face. So in closing, what I really wanted to say is that I encourage all of us in our community to listen to each other, engage in civil discussions, and treat each other with respect and kindness around these difficult and important issues. In today's environment, we seem to seem if somebody disagrees with us that they're just completely wrong. So I look forward to continue to having honest and open discussions over these difficult issues and getting our kids back into the classroom and participating in extracurricular activities. I think this is important as we move forward. And even if I disagree with the decisions that the board comes up with and the school comes up with, I know that you have made a decision based on facts, data, and opinions that you believe is in the best interest of the health and safety and well-being of our kids. And so I will support that decision even though I may disagree with it. So I just want to thank you for your time of working on these critical issues and trying to find ways to get our kids safely back into the classroom, but also into extracurricular activities. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Grace. So Neil, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good to hear your voice.
Hello, my name is Grace O'Neil. I am a senior, and this last season, I was a captain on the gymnastics team. Several of my teammates and I have been practicing at Madtown Twisters since June and have been following the public health guidelines for Madison and Dane County. We will continue to do this during our high school practices and competitions. Having a season this year is more than just about the sport. To me, this team is family. I've been a competitive gymnast for over 10 years, and the idea that it could all be over without one final season truly breaks my heart. Gymnastics is both a team and individual sport, which means for us to be independent females, it also allows us to lean on each other in times of need and to celebrate in times of success. Sports are also important for all of us, both mentally and physically. In a time where social interactions and opportunities to be physically active are limited, having a sports season would provide some normalcy and hope. Having sports holds us all accountable for our actions and decisions in order to be eligible to compete. Some examples include maintaining our grades, attending all classes, and making good choices in our social lives. I know all of you have our safety and health in your best interests, but as I sit here talking to all of you tonight, I find myself thinking about the last time I was on the competition floor, which was in March at the state meet. This was right as COVID was starting to affect all of our lives. If I would have known that this uncertainty would continue into the next year and my final season wasn't guaranteed, I would have embraced each moment a little more and embraced each hug from my teammate, coach, and fan a little more too. I would have paused and taken in the feeling just a little longer. I understand that some of the decisions are out of your control, but thank you for taking the time to listen and for allowing us to use our voices tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, Grace.
Julia Magnuson, welcome, Julia. Julia Magnuson. Well, maybe we'll come back to Julia, if that's okay. How about Janet Ballster, B-A-L-S-T-E-R? Janet Ballster?
Yeah, hi. I'm here. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
All right. Well, thanks again for having us, giving us time to speak tonight. I am going to speak, follow up on Colleen and Grace's comments as a gymnastics parent. You had circulated a couple really poignant articles about the effects of COVID, or the effects of sports on COVID transmission. And I think Holly plans to speak a little bit more about that. But meanwhile, schools around us are going on with sports. And within the Badger Conference, 12 of the other 15 schools had fall sports this season. And of the six others within Dane County, four had fall sports. From what I can tell, most of those also intend to have winter sports. So as they're going on with their activities, our students are missing out on the opportunity for physical and social development. And as that happens, you had another article about the mental health effects on student athletes and students in general from school closings and sports cancellations. And this was an article also by UW Health Researchers showing significant and alarming mental health impacts. They surveyed over 3,000 students in May across Wisconsin and compared those with historical data. And notably, they found that rates of mild to severe depression increased 30% to 70% almost. And that was in May, so I can only imagine how that may have changed now into the fall. I know I see more impact already in our own households since that time. So while the depression rates, reported depression rates are increasing, the physical, psycho-social health reports are down. And so this puts our Wisconsin athletes at risk. We know previous research has shown that prolonged quarantines can negatively impact mental health, and sports is their critical tool for student athletes to combat that risk. So lastly, I just want to share a little personal story. I'm a Viking from the 80s. I was an athlete, but not a gymnast. And yet, I vividly recall the excitement of our gymnastics meets, cheering the team and sending them to state, even still after 30-some years and living far away. That rings a bell with me. So now, with a young gymnastics daughter and having moved back to the area, I was so glad she would have the chance to be a Viking. So even if there can't be a state competition this year, I want my daughter and all the girls, the team and on other winter sports teams to have the chance to experience that team camaraderie and the challenge of being a Mount Horvare athlete. And as well, for our community to build those kinds of memories with them. Thanks again for the chance to speak tonight.
Thank you, Janet, very much.
Next, the person is Torin Hannah. Torin?
Hello.
Nice picture of you in the paper this past week.
Yeah. My teammate Anthony Lang will also be speaking after me. We're here to represent the boys' basketball program at Mount Horvare High School. First of all, we understand the amount of pressure that you are under in these unprecedented times. With that, we feel as though it is in the best interest of us and our teammates to resume basketball workouts in the high school gym. The meaning of our team being together is imperative for our mental, physical, and social health. Many of us have been working hard to have our season be as successful as possible, and to have this taken away from us before it begins would be heartbreaking. Along with that, the lack of physical activity for those who are unable to get access to facilities would negatively impact their mental health, which then may affect the motivation for those individuals to succeed educationally. Being a student athlete and representing Mount Horvare to us means being held at a higher standard academically while continuing to play our sport at a high level. Additionally, basketball to us is not just about the game or competition. It's the value of companionship, perseverance, commitment, and devotion. We pledge that we will be responsible when it comes to all guidelines for safety and hold our teammates accountable as well. Thank you for your time, and we hope you consider all aspects of our high school experience when making your decision. Thank you.
Thanks to you both.
Nice job. Thank you, Anthony and Torin. How about Julia Magnuson? Julia, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Sorry, my computer before wouldn't let me use my microphone. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. We're glad you're here.
So hi, my name is Julia Magnuson, and I'm a senior this year. I'm here to represent our girls' basketball team and winter sports to explain why our student athletes are fighting for our sports seasons. If you ask me what my biggest accomplishment in high school is, I would say basketball 100%. It has gotten me to be the person, athlete, teammate, and student I can be. Having four full seasons of your high school career is one of the most looked-forward-to parts of becoming a high school athlete. This is what we all work our hardest to get to, and for that to be taken away is heartbreaking. As a senior, personally knowing that I could potentially not play my last game of basketball as a Viking is hard to even think of. We as a class are losing every day, little by little, parts of our senior year, and I don't want this to be taken from us as well. Remember what it was like for you to be a senior and put yourself in our shoes. Please let us try. We deserve a chance to try. To see all summer that girls we played against from a young age and competed against these past two years in a gym, playing their sports, is frustrating. These past seven months, we have been locked out of our gym, unable to have contact with coaches, and everything put on hold. I even see teammates and athletes all around Mount Horvare losing motivation as you strip away our hope of a season. We understand that this is a tough decision, and the position you are placed in is a hard one. We have school districts around us making it work, and we just ask you to let us kids follow suit and participate in games outside of Dane County. Finally, we understand that you don't want to put us at risk, but we know what we are getting ourselves into. If teammates or athletes are not comfortable, then they would not come out this year. And we know that you and the WIAA will make, will do anything you can to ensure our health and safety if we do get a season. But if we do not, then teams will be finding other tournaments to play that will not provide the same safety precautions. This could then affect the decisions to come back to school as well. We also know that taking away our season negatively affects so many athletes' mental health. A big reason people play sports is to release any stress they need to, surrounded by people that support them. We ask that you please just give us a chance. Let us try. Let us play. Let us have a season. Thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight.
Nice job, Julia. Thank you.
Colleen St. Arnold.
How's it going, Dr. Salerno?
It's doing really well. I hope you and your beautiful family are doing well. What's on your mind tonight?
First of all, I just want to say thank you, Neil, to the school board and Dr. Salerno for allowing me to speak tonight and your dedicated work and willingness to listen to so many people speak. I know your jobs are thankless ones, and I know that it sometimes comes with a lot of scrutiny. So I really appreciate all that you've done so far for us and putting our well-being at the forefront. I just want to, you know, I just wanted to allude, trying to find the right words to describe what has transpired over the last six, seven months is difficult, but more so terrifying. Not terrifying because of a virus, and by no means am I downplaying, but terrifying because of the sadness I see in the faces of our student athletes day by day. There are those few that will wonder why people keep pushing for sports to continue and why in a pandemic, people can't think of more important things. But I mean, well, simply put, I mean, to some people, it is everything. Sports are everything. And the field, the court, the diamond, the track, the pool are all just extensions of the classroom. But even with that reality, some students, they come to school because of sports. They see a future in the sport they play, and it is their opportunity to earn an education beyond high school. They show up to school so they can be eligible, which then allows them to, in their classes and process, to understand and appreciate their classes. It helps keep our student athletes out of trouble, away from drugs and alcohol, avoiding and avoiding other high-risk behaviors. You know, when these student athletes come to us, us coaches, we, they learn essential life skills and lessons that they'll carry with them forever: effort, determination, self-discipline, teamwork, team management, or time management, just to name a few. And in March, I never in my wildest imagination, I don't think any of us, obviously, could have ever predicted or foresaw what was going to happen. I think most of us were scared. We didn't know what was going to happen or how we were going to handle it, or what would happen if our family contracted it. Wear masks, wash your hands, don't go out unless you have to, wipe your groceries down, et cetera. We were pondered the several ways to prevent the virus, but nothing was ever really set in stone. But look how far we've come in understanding the virus since then. We have, we have a majority of the state of Wisconsin participating in athletics, including several Badger Conference schools. And why have they been able to play? The answer is because we know how to do it safely. We know how to keep our student athletes involved in the game they love and make it a safe environment as possible, as we possibly can. Us coaches have been in contact with several coaches from other districts that have gotten us off the ground smoothly. We are ready to answer the call. Our coaching staffs are ready to do whatever is necessary to give our student athletes the seasons they deserve. And most importantly, our coaching staffs are ready to keep our student athletes safe. The Watson Study that was just recently published reported that 100% of schools participating had a formal plan in place to mitigate risk associated with COVID-19 and its spread. Am I saying there's no chance of COVID? Absolutely not. There's always a chance. And in the end, I believe that is all the student athletes and coaches are looking for, a chance. I think everyone deserves a chance. For some, it is the last time they will step on a field, court, donning the red and white with Vikings across the chest, representing our school, our families, and our community. Thank you, school board and Dr. Salerno, for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach.
Ella Peterson. Ella?
Hello. My name is Ella Peterson. I'm currently a junior at Mount Horvare High School, and I am a two-sport varsity athlete. competing in gymnastics and soccer. Coming into my freshman year, a transfer student to the Mount Horeb Area School District, I knew very few people. Involvement in sports provided a way for me to ease into this new school district and build a lifelong camaraderie with my teammates that would help me persevere through the struggles I would soon face. Unfortunately, by the end of my freshman year, I had developed severe stress fractures in both of my feet, requiring surgery in the fall of my sophomore year. After this surgery, I had to endure three months of being confined to a wheelchair and then extensive physical therapy. Regardless of this adversity, I never lost hope that I would eventually return to the sports I loved. Because sports had always played such a significant role in my life, I made the decision to be a manager for the gymnastics team as I still wanted to be a part of the gymnastics family. Even though I couldn't contribute to the team physically, I strove to always encourage my teammates and be their biggest fan as they won the state championship title. As I was preparing to be cleared to participate in the soccer season, it was suddenly canceled due to the onset of COVID nineteen. Devastated by this news, I had come to the realization that I would be denied another season of a sport I loved. I was again hopeful for this upcoming gymnastics season as I was going to pro prove to myself that the injury I once had would not define my high school sports career. As I address the board today, I am truly saddened to face the possibility of personally losing yet another sports season. Painfully, I know firsthand the struggles associated with losing an entire year of sports and the mental strains it has on a person. I would not wish this loss upon anyone else as it can be incredibly detrimental to the student athletes through the loss of an outlet for stress relief that they once knew. As students, we have already been stripped of our social interactions during the school day as a result of our current virtual setting. This has left many students in search of an outlet in which they can safely interact with others in person. This need can be satisfied by allowing the continuation of winter sports with the proper precautionary measures. For the past five months, I have safely practiced at a local gym that employs the se- that employs several safety measures, including wearing masks at all times, disinfecting equipment after each class, and only allowing spotting if necessary, and even then hand sanitizer before and after contact with the gymnasts. These precautions have prevented any significant outbreak from occurring, to my knowledge, and I believe that these measures could be easily applied to our own high school gymnastics practices and meets to ensure safety is maintained during this season. Additionally, most school districts adjacent to Mount Horeb in southwest Wisconsin have successfully navigated fall sports seasons during this pandemic, proving that it is possible to safely participate in sports at this time. This has been recently confirmed by a study out of the University of Wisconsin's Orthopedics Department that states that participation in sports is not associated with an increased risk of COVID nineteen among Wisconsin high school student athletes. Not only do sports have several physical and mental health benefits, but they also provide the opportunity to build numerous skills that will be invaluable to our future. For instance, competition in sports holds students accountable for their actions, builds confidence in their abilities, and ultimately sets them up for success in the real world. For these reasons, I feel that the winter sports season, specifically gymnastics, can safely be conducted with the proper precautionary measures. I feel strongly that the benefits of keeping a gymnastics season far outweigh the risks associated with COVID nineteen infection or the adverse mental health impact associated with isolation related to COVID nineteen measures. I also believe that whether or not a student participates in sports should be the parent's choice based on each family's individual risk factors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ella.
Now, that is a story of fortitude and character. Thank you so much for sharing your personal experience with us tonight. Mr. Adam Mertz. Mr. Mertz, are you on the call tonight?
I am, Dr. Slerno. How are you?
Great to hear you.
Excellent. Thanks for the chance to speak. I um really appreciate a lot of the comments that I've heard tonight from people and particularly want to uh mention John Elliott for his conversation about the tone of our discussions. I really, everyone knows what a difficult situation we're in and and uh I think the school board members have done a great job prioritizing the health and well-being of our students and trying to navigate this pandemic. Um, I my eligibility ran out a long time ago. Uh, and I I have a reluctant athlete, so I don't really have a horse in the race of whether kids compete myself, but I do want to say that um sports was just really so monumental in my life and I'm not someone who plays that over academics one bit. In fact, I think it's just part of the whole experience. And I'm going to comment this tonight. I want to echo a lot of the comments that people said earlier, which are great. My position is that um we've played it really safe as a family. My kids both elected for virtual school and they'll probably stay with that for the rest of the year if that may if that remains an option. I don't think that virtual school and in-person extracurriculars, including athletics, are contradictory. I think they actually play pretty well together. Um, and I think that that's this is a real opportunity for us to come together on something that we can agree upon. The the basis for my argument is that extracurriculars and athletics are optional. There's a you're consenting to your activity in those. I understand a lot of the precautions were taken in school and as I said, I'm very supportive of that. You can't you can't simulate extracurriculars, athletics particularly, the way that you can in school. I don't think anyone's going to argue the virtual learning model is perfect, but it's been very good for my family and I appreciate how reliable it's been compared to other districts that have had interruptions in their in their learning. Um, I feel like we went in with a a safe plan and decided to see what happened and how other districts were handling it. I have heard a lot of anecdotal evidence from parents in districts around the state um about how they're uh operating and I've been very encouraged by that in terms of how much people are taking safety precautions to heart. I think that the athletes touched on something about personal responsibility that's worth worth reiterating that when you have when you have a code that you have to live up to, if you have something that means that much to you, you are going to do everything, not just in your control, but in the control of your friends around you, the people who are jeopardizing your chance to compete. That includes parents. Um, there's a lot of people who think have been pretty vocal about getting back into school, maybe aren't modeling all the behaviors that help us get back into school. I think that having opportunities like like this out there would absolutely encourage people to see what's at what's at stake here and they do have a horse in the race. Um, that's all I have. I just want to say thanks again to the board for considering all of these uh opinions that have come forward. Um, and I think everyone would really like to see the kids out there this year. I don't doubt that one bit. It's whether it can be done safely and in a way that everyone's comfortable with. I think that we have a path there and I'd love to see them have an opportunity to get back onto the fields and courts this year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. Good to see you.
JJ, Port, are you on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Call me.
I'm JJ Ports. I'm speaking in behalf of all the Mount Horeb wrestlers and coaches of wrestling. Uh, I would like to talk about the mental health part of a winter sport, which for me, it keeps me doing hard work and it keeps us as a team to not procrastinate as hard as most people do in winter sports because we know that as a family, as a wrestling community and wrestling family, that we keep our grades as high as we can. So if one of us falls behind, we all take a step back to push them forward to where they need to be. And without winter sports, we can't help our fellow family out like we can if we did. And with a wrestling team, I feel like I have a second family beyond my house, which is they support me when I'm on my lowest or on my highest and we're there for each other when we need it the most. And when we can't see each other, it is very difficult for us to strive how we used to be. And as since we didn't have a football season or fall season for any sport, in fact, that I had to go out of my way to a different camp where I'm currently wrestling with strangers that I don't know where they've been before. And I feel my risk of COVID nineteen is a lot higher. But if we did have a winter sport in our school, it would be much safer so people don't have to go out of their way and meeting complete strangers to work on something that they love. Uh, my freshman season, I went through broken fingers that revolted in surgery. I had a hairline fracture in my hip and no matter what, after that, I hid all those injuries. Sorry, Sherry, but uh I hid all those injuries so I can keep doing the thing that I love. And I finally told them about my injuries, which wasn't smart because it was after season, but I got to wrestle my entire season, which I had no regrets of doing. And for any s- sports in the winter, we have these obstacles which are getting your grades up. And we have that goal of when you do your sport, you keep grades up so you can do it because that is something that you love and you can easily take it away, but you can also easily gain it. And anytime you're stressed about schoolwork or tests or just friendships or anything, you have that coping mechanism, which is your winter sport. And without that winter sport, we are all stressed out as virtual students and we just need something to help us. And one of the quotes that I found from one of our athletes' parents is it may not seem like a big deal for us, but it's a huge deal to them. I put my blood, sweat, tears, everything into what I do for Mount Horeb to show a name that Mount Horeb can be one of the best places to go. But when you take away winter sports from us, I can't show who I really am as a person. And I've played, you've talked about how these four years can go as fast as they can. And to, in fact, they do. I felt like my freshman year was just ten seconds. And when you take a sport away for a season, you're taking away basically five seconds of my entire high school career out. And I feel like we can do this and we just need a chance to show that we can do this. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, JJ.
Thank you. And rounding us out in our public comments for the first uh time is Holly Stoner. Good evening, Holly.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Slerno and school board members, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Holly Stoner and along with my husband Troy, we have two children in the district. Uh, Talon is an eighth grader and Sydney's a junior. You may remember meeting Sydney last spring when you welcomed her and her teammates to join a board meeting after the gymnastics team won state. For Sydney, gymnastics is much more than what she does. It who is is who she is. Being a part of the Mount Horeb High School gymnastics team has been something she's dreamed about her entire life. When I say not having a winter sports season would be devastating to her, uh, it's an understatement. It would crush her. One of the reasons Sydney loves gymnastics and the Mount Horeb High School gymnastics team is because of the coaching staff. We have been blessed in Mount Horeb to have the best coaches in the state. Martha Kohler Faust, Pete Faust, Joy Finley, Shelby and Tony put their heart and soul into the program. They love coaching our gymnastics team and it shows. What we are asking you is to not let our coaching resource be wasted. They are currently able to coach other schools' gymnasts, but not our high school gymnasts, not our Mount Horeb gymnasts, which is beyond frustrating. Martha has been working with gymnasts all summer at a Madison club. She knows how to run a safe practice. Many of our girls have been practicing since practicing since June first. And there's not been any cases or transmissions, much like the UW study I emailed you, stating participation in high school sports has not been associated with an increased risk of COVID nineteen. Practices and games are going on all around us and with safety protocols in place. Athletes and coaches are invested in their programs and will adhere to the guidelines that we put in place. Martha can bring her knowledge of running a safe practicing environment to Colleen Nassim, and they will work together to make a plan for safe practices and eventually meets at Mount Horeb High School. They can control the numbers of student athletes, which will be less than what is currently happening at clubs. Also, gymnastics is considered a low-risk sport. And you know that the Public Health and Safety, Madison and Dane County um have a safety plan in place and they're saying that practices can work right now. We need to start practicing as a team so when we're able to compete, we are ready. I would hate for there to be a state gymnastics meet and not have Mount Horeb. The Division Two state champions, not there. How devastating would that be for our gymnasts, coaches, and community? Please allow our winter sports teams to start working together with our equipment, each other, and our coaches at the high school. Thank you for your time and work for our community. I hope you consider everything I have shared with you and that you will open up practices for the winter sports seasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Are there any other speakers, voices, and comments?
I don't see anyone else.
Hearing none, we'll move to item four A, personnel transactions.
There isn't an addendum to any board members?
Motion to approve with the addendum. This is Kimberly.
Second, this is Danny.
Kimberly has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve personnel tran- uh transactions with the addendum. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions with the addendum are approved. Item five, A, B, C, D, and E, the consent agenda, approved. Jeff has moved uh moved the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Danny. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item six A, discussion items, commit uh committee member reports, commit community and legislative um that doesn't, legislative engagement committee. Jessica?
Hello. Alrighty. We met on September twenty eighth, which seems like a lifetime ago. Um, Dr. Slerno at our meeting shared with us, um, and we discussed the impact of the State Supreme Court's decision related to public health, Madison Dane County's uh K twelve health order. We also talked about Senator Howard Markland's comments about state finances um and that we anticipate that the governor will propose his budget in late January, early February. Um, and then our work will shift to um budget-related issues in terms of how we want to advocate for um how the budget impacts and supports our students. Um, in August, um, we as a committee wrote a letter asking for supports in several um areas, which I talked about last month. Um, and since then, we have received uh responses from our representatives and including uh Governor Eva's office just this past week. And um our next meeting is November twenty third. That's all I have.
God, Education Committee, Kimberly.
Well, good evening from the Education Committee. This month, we welcome to a new student reps, Tess Purin and Margaret Harvey. And our high school principal, Cody Lundquist, was the guest at our meeting. One focus is for professional development this month is K through five staff discussions and trainings on how to take assessments in a virtual learning environment. The district is also restarting our Human Growth and Development Committee, which community members are welcome to apply to serve on. In policy work, we recommended language changes to our Advanced Placement Courses policy to be more inclusive for all interested students. And in academic work, we reviewed three years of data for Algebra AB, which is often a pathway course for students looking into further coursework at METC. We found some pretty promising results from our students there. That was all for October.
Awesome. Thank you, Kimberly. Personnel, Leah.
All right. We met on October twenty first. We reviewed three policies. The first was our return to work policy. Um, the second was a professional growth policy and the third was to actually um remove a policy on professional staff meetings. All of those will come to the board, I think, November second. Um, remove a policy on professional staff meetings. All of those will come to the board, I think November second. Um, that'll actually be our last meeting um, until we start handbook work um, in the spring.
Uh, oops a daisy. Alright, six B, information and efficacy reports, number of students receiving professional certificates. And number of students receiving apprenticeships, work cooperatives and or work experiences. Mrs. Straka.
Thanks, Mr. Heiss. That was a mouthful, wasn't it? So, uh, this is one of our longer reports. Of the school year, so I will be going through it piece by piece, those sort of three main sections that you will mention, Rod. The first section within the report deals with our certified nursing program. Um, where students can take classes either at Madison College or Hurstin College. Um, now it's a little bit more of a virtual piece, but. Uh, we were still able to hold strong with the amount of students who are going through that program. So, so far this year. This um, academic year, we've had three students complete that nursing program and we may have. More students look into that program as the school year progresses. So on figure one, um, we can see the graphic there and we, we, we have seen a decline. Um, since the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, um, even the fourteen fifteen school year and that was due to the West Side. Uh, Madison College location closing a while ago and actually being torn down. Um, in the West Town. Um, so we did see those numbers decline. However, I do anticipate those numbers to grow. As students learn about the program and as there's some more online flexibility. So that's really good to see. Uh, the next section is looking at some of our new academies that we've had partnerships. With Madison College and the Mount Horeb Fire Department. Couple of years ago, the Mount Horeb Fire Department led by at that time Chief Eric. Eric Brinkman uh, brought the idea of these E M T and fire academies to the school district. And we had pretty good student interest. So as you can see, the student participation in those programs. Over time and even this school year, we've had good student participation there as well. Um, and we may even see a few more students uh, who are interested. I believe the. Uh, E M T now is in the spring, so the E M T could slightly go up as well for those numbers. The next area to look at um. Would be, we'll skip that part for now, Dr. Slerno, would be the um, indicator to looking at students who completed. Completes the work experience, the work co-ops and the youth apprenticeship. So work experience historically um, in Mount Horeb has been. Divided into sort of two sections. So if we go to table three, we can see those. We have. The general work experience program and we have seen a uh, decline there and I'll explain why in a little bit. Um, and then the work experience transitions programs where we're actually gonna see an increase, I think relatively soon. Let's look at that first row. Uh, we have seen a uh, decline um, with zero the past three years and that's because we're actually steering our students to go. The youth apprenticeship route, which will be later on in the report, uh, where youth apprenticeship students um. Go and work at a local or surrounding area business in a specific area and then they also take a course tied to that. Um, you, you youth apprenticeship area. So it's a little bit of a tighter program in that respect. So that's why the general work experience program is sort of being phased out. But we do have the work experience transitions program and I, I do anticipate um, that program. Um, seen an increase in future years as uh, Taylor Rose Meyer is our new transitions coordinator. And I had a really good conversation with her about her vision about where she wants the program to go. And how she wants to expand it for students who are, who are within our special education program. So. Uh, there's, there were some comments in the report from Taylor about how she sees that going. So hopefully you had a chance to see those. And then youth apprenticeship is the last area that I wanted to highlight. Um, youth apprenticeship numbers as on table four shows and figure. Uh, three shows as Dr. Slerno is showing those. Uh, we have seen a really good increase. In students uh, who are um, enrolling in our youth apprenticeship programming. Um, part of that is, is that we were, are phasing out that work experience piece of it. But um, the program is growing. Kids see the neat opportunity to go out. Kind of feel that they're interested in, in maybe having a, a potential career in. And learning from the local experts and then also uh. Earning money out as well. So it's a really neat program. Um, students can see what they really wanna do or maybe what they don't wanna do as they think about their future. Jody Baber has been our, our coordinator for that and um, she has just been. Continue to find ways to grow the pro- to grow the program and maintain the program. Especially in a pandemic, making sure our kids have a safe work experience and a safe work environment. Um, that they can continue that programming. So um, she's had to work one-on-one with employers and kids to make sure that. Has been continuing in the spring and continues now into the fall. The last piece, um, the whole sort of big overall look at this. Um, report is when we started to disaggregate the data. Uh, and that's a newer part of this report this year. So table two and table five show that. And one, one piece that as we look at equity work within our school district is to look at. The kids who are in these programs. Um, we don't have a very diverse student body. Participating and enrolling in these programs. So that's something that's on my radar. That's something that's on Jody Baber's radar and that's. Something that's on our radar as a whole, as a school district. So you may have heard us talk about our work with the Dane County Equity Consortium. And part of the work this year is an action research project question. So I did put to that on page six that our goal this year is to um. Really look at who's taking these opportunities and how can we better market. Better set up students um, from more of a more diverse background. And get them in these opportunities. So hopefully. Um, we'll find some ways to make that happen and then we'll share out that information later on in the school year. And that's it, Mr. Heiss.
Great report as always. Any questions or comments for Sarah? Questions or comments for Sarah? Alright, great job, Sarah. Appreciate it very much. Item six C, November thirtieth board workshop topics. And this is just uh, a reminder. More than anything else, if you have topics that you'd like covered at our upcoming board walk workshop, you can let Dr. Slerno. Or me know if you have some suggestions now, I'd be happy to, happy to hear them now too.
This is Jessica. I already shared these with Dr. Slerno, but I made the suggestion um, that we do some. Work related to the equity audit that the administration is starting. So if there's some sort of related. Professional learning for the school board. Um, and I made another suggestion related to um. P flag just uh, hosted two different trainings, um, and they were both. Fantastic and really informative and if there's some learning that we could share with the rest of the board, um. And possibly talk about some next steps. I think that those two issues are related and they're just possible topics for our workshop.
Great. Thanks, Jessica. Other suggestions? Alright, move on. Six D, COVID nineteen update, Dr. Slerno.
Well, good evening again, everyone. Uh, wanted to provide just a brief update as to where we're at in. Our efforts to stay on top of that November sixteenth target date for. A hybrid return for our young people in K two, K through two. First things first, there is a survey that went out to families. This past Friday afternoon and we're asking our families if they'd be so kind as to take some time to complete that. So that way we can spend the next couple of days planning for transportation, classroom space, physical distancing and the like. Asking people really to tell us if they'd like to stay all virtual and those who would like to look at a hybrid model. We think the survey will take all of maybe five minutes to complete. It's not too, too difficult. Uh, but your response will really be critical to us. And in fact, uh, it can actually save us a lot of trouble if you don't mind. Uh, and make certain that you, you do respond by Wednesday afternoon at five P M. Otherwise, we're having to spend time, uh, valuable time reaching out to you, asking you to personal phone call to complete the survey. And that will hold up our ability to get us moving. Our goal is still November sixteen. We recognize there still might be some questions that are out there despite the nice uh, video that Principal Johnson put together. There might be still questions or. Some confusion along the way. And so in that spirit. We will be hosting a virtual town hall meeting for K two families tomorrow night at five P M. It'll be live. And I've placed the link on our district's webpage. For those of you who can't make it at five P M, we try to host a lot of these meetings after what's traditional work hours, but we know the term traditional work hours is shifting more and more these days. So we will be sure to record this and then have that up on our district's YouTube channel and we'll push out the address. And lastly, board members, uh, you heard me say this last week and then divide, uh, being redundant, forgive me, but. I do ask that the board please consider bringing uh, back the opportunity for our young people. Uh, in our co-Ex and extracurricular and athletic programs. Uh, to do so in a safe manner as prescribed by Public Health Madison Dane County. Uh, I have asked Colleen Nessime, uh, in the event that this is something that you would so approve. Uh, that we begin working immediately with our coaches. And maybe even bring back that team of folks who helped us this summer. Uh, that Colleen assembled, including parents, medical providers, students and the like. Who helped guide the decision uh, at the time related to fall sports. We bring back those two teams. Uh, and then have them make recommendations to us, uh, the senior leadership team uh, moving forward. Any such changes. Uh, would be in accord with Public Health Madison Dane County. So what are we asking you to do tonight, board members? We're asking if you'll allow us to extend public health, excuse me, our graduate opening plan to impact our corporate. Extracurricular level activities at the high school level. Uh, I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Questions proceed. Hearing now, moving on to action items. Item seven A. Review and approve of the district's budget levy, state aid equalized value and fund equity amounts. Um, Dr. Slerno can give us some direction in just a minute, but in the meantime. I want to draw your attention to the administrative content under this item because we'll have to make an item. For, uh, excuse me, a motion for one, two and three in a specific language that is outlined in the administrative content. So. Do you have any uh, further direction or further thoughts for us, Dr. Slerno?
Yes, please. If you don't mind, uh, I have my friend and colleague Scott B. Young, our associate superintendent of business and finance on the call tonight. Uh, he does want to take a moment just to share with the board. Our budget adjustments as of October twenty sixth. Good evening, Scott. Are you still on the call?
I am here. Good evening, everybody.
Welcome.
Well, thanks so much for the opportunity. You know, we, every year we find ourselves um, beginning the budget process and. Working through what the um, state regulations are for um. Public school funding throughout the state and um, wanna recognize everybody. There's so, so many people that. Had an opportunity to work through the annual meetings budget, um, that was adopted at that meeting back in August. Um, the month of October, as you may recall, is an important month for school finance. Um, specifically in October, once we know our student enrollment in September. On October fifteenth, we find out our official state aid amount that we'll be getting from D P I. That helps us establish our tax levy. And so what the finance committee did um, this past Monday. Is they went through the budget adjustments document that Dr. Slerno just had up on the screen. Um, and it also um, references the first of the three. Um, motions that um, Mr. Heiss um, mentioned in the admin content of the um, board docs. And so this format um, allows us to be able to recognize our new revenue limit data. Um, to adopt an official tax levy for the year. Um, and one thing I always remind our finance committee is that back in August, when we have our annual meeting. The budget that is approved is our adopted budget for the year. Anything we do after our annual meeting is considered a revision to our adopted budget. And so districts all around the state, as I mentioned, when October rolls around. They're able to calculate their tax levy based on how much state aid will be receiving. The document that you see in front of you is simply the um, standard format that we're required to follow per state law. And so you'll see at the stop, at the top, the standard language for um. Um, recognizing state statutes for um, revising our budget. So their adjustment sheet itself is broken up into three categories. Um, the first one is our general fund. You may recall that's our general operating budget. Um, we have modifications to make both on the revenue and expenditure side. Um, in addition to the adjustment that we need to make officially now for our tax levy. It also recognizes changes that have been made through state and federal grants. As well as the S R dollars or sometimes we call the COVID dollars. Um, that we're receiving from the federal government as well. So those adjustments are recognized. In this general fund category. And I just wanna point out one last item here. Is that the items that are presented here are only the changes that need to be made. So the vast majority of our budget where we're not seeing any changes, they're not uh, represented in this table. You'll notice that we're not suggesting any change in fund balance and it's, the reason is because. The board back in the spring and then at the annual meeting, we recognized that we would have a balanced budget for the school year. So again, you'll see no change. The second table has to do with our debt service fund. And the debt service fund, you'll see a slight um, change and that has to do with our um. Debt service schedules. We wanna make sure that we're recognizing the appropriate um. Principal and interest payments that we'll have for um, our debt service for the upcoming year. And then the last item down at the bottom, while it seems small in comparison, three hundred and twenty-one dollar change. Um, it is something that is important for us to recognize, the official amount that we'll be receiving from the federal government. For our Carol Perkins vocational grant. Um, you may recall that we are um, the fiscal agent with Wisconsin Heights. And so this recognizes the revenue that both districts will be receiving. Um, and you'll see that from our projection to our actual, we'll see a three hundred and twenty-one dollar increase. And so um, how we, again, how we connect this budget adjustments document to the three motions in front of you. Is the adjustments document is reflected in motion number one, approving the overall revenues and expenditures. Um, as of today. And then um, the second motion addresses the tax levy and mill rate. And then the third motion addresses recognizing our fund balance. And what it means in terms of a percentage of our overall expenditure budget.
Uh, thank you, Scott. Other questions for Scott? If there are no questions from Scott, the chair would entertain a motion to approve. Item number one, adoption of revised budget. And that, that uh. That motion needs to be made in the language that you see in its entirety. All right, I'll move that this board approved the 2020-2021 revenue budget totaling $38,298,540 and expenditure budget totaling $40,188,170, including all funds. The difference in revenues and expenditures includes items such as the Fund 39 tax levy receipts calendar year and expenditures fiscal year and the Fund 49 receipts referendum interest and expenditures referendum project completion.
Second.
Danny has seconded the motion. Is there any, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move by, we'll move to a roll call, which is required. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes. And I am a yes. The i's are seven, the no's are zeros, the i's have it, the motion carries, and the, and the revised budget is approved. Item two, certification of tax levy for 2020, 2020, 2021.
This is Diana. I move to approve the Mount Harbury School District levy in the amount of $13,996,644 in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 2020, 2021 school year. This tax levy is $42,578 higher than the 2019, 2020 tax levy, which totaled $13,954.66. This tax levy necessitates a mill rate of $8.78 per 1,000 of equalized value compared to a mill rate of $9.20 per 1,000 of equalized value for 2019, 2020.
Second. Jeff, Diana has moved and Jeff has seconded a motion to adopt item two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes. Jeff? Yes. Jeff is a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes. And I am a yes. The i's are seven, the no's are zero. The motion carries and the tax levy is certified. Item three, designation of fund equity.
This is Diana. I will make a motion to apply the projected $6,760,124.36 being 24.18% of the general fund expenditure budget as unassigned fund balance to meet cash flow needs.
Second. Jeff has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Danny's a yes. Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes. Jeff? Yes. Jeff is a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica's a yes. Yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes. And I am a yes. The i's are seven, the no's are zero. The motion carries and the designation of the fund equity is approved. Is there any further on this item, Dr. Solano?
Well, there's time, but please do allow me to extend a note of gratitude, not only to our Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance, but all members of our Finance Committee for another job well done.
And I would draw, I would draw people's attention to that wonderful mill rate.
Down $0.42 per $1,000 of equalized value.
All right, item 7B, consideration of action to direct a board representative to vote for the opening directors, for the, for the, for the open directorcy while attending the Wasby Region 12 meeting. So it's my understanding is standing that Kimberly and Jessica will be going to the meetings. There may be others who plan to go as well, but those are the two names. I have, we have to designate one of you as the person who will deliver the district's vote on the, our Region 12 representative.
This is Jessica. I move that it's Kimberly. I believe she's our Wasby representative liaison. So it would make sense that she does it.
Okay, second. Jessica has moved and Jeff has seconded a motion that Kimberly be our board representative.
If she wants it.
Wants it?
You may amend that amendment to give how you'd like her to vote.
Oh, yes. I don't.
Or if she sees fit.
Or if she sees fit. I think we trust Kimberly's, I think we trust Kimberly's judgment. So Jessica has made a motion and Jeff has seconded a motion that Kimberly be the representative to vote at the Wasby Region 12 meeting. Is there any discussion?
Would you be willing to accept that amendment to the motions, Jessica? And who is the second? Jeff?
Jeff.
Just that it would indicate that Kimberly would be voting on behalf of the board if she sees appropriate?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's fine with both. Move her in second there. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No. The i's have it, the motion carries, and Kimberly's best judgment will be called upon at the Wasby Region 12 meeting. Item 7C, consider approval of revised 2020, 2021 school year calendars, Dr. Solano.
And since the board's decision last week, it was appropriate for us to go back and revisit our academic calendars. We've now established a new calendar that's strictly for K2 hybrid. It reflects the changes as we've discussed, including a time in November for our children to come back and time for our staff to prepare for our students' arrival on November 11, 12, and 13. There will be no school. One of the things we've taken great pains to do is make certain that we level out as much as possible the number of students' contact days for students A through K and L through Z. And parents of kindergarten or through second grade students, I'd like you just to note that traditionally, we have A through K on Monday and Tuesdays and L through Z on Thursdays and Fridays. But because we did not want an extended period of time to go between when our L through Z kids met because of Thanksgiving break and the upcoming winter break, we're proposing on Monday, the 23rd of November, A through K, and on Tuesday, the 24th, which not traditionally would be an L through Z day, but that would be a day for our children. And then, of course, as you can see, we're off to, off to Thanksgiving break. And then similarly, right before winter break, again, so that there is a large gap of time between our L through Z students that we would, we would do the same thing. For those of you who have children who are in 4K or in grades 3 through 12, I want to share this schedule with you. We've amended this calendar to reflect that we would be in those grade levels, 4K through, 4K and grades 3 through 12, we would be virtual until the end of the first semester, at which time we're, we will revisit this calendar to see if maybe there's something that's changed from Public Health Madison Dane County, even sooner for that matter. And so you'll see a revised schedule, assuming that this could be approved this evening. So may I answer any questions? Oh, might I just add one more thing, please? I, we agreed to move our parent teacher conferences in March from the 11th to the 10th. And the reason why we've done that is so that way we don't miss a day of instruction with our kids on the 11th. So you'll see that across the board. So we would add it on that Wednesday, which is traditionally a day whereby we try to do some individualized instruction and catching up with kids.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Solano?
Motion to approve both calendars.
This is Leah's second.
Diana has moved and Leah has seconded a motion to approve both calendars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The i's have it, the motion carries, and the two revised calendars are approved. Item 7B, consider action related to the high school co- and extracurricular activities.
I move that we allow extracurriculars to resume at the high school per Public Health Madison Dane County's recommendations.
Second. Second. Danny has, has moved and I have seconded a motion to resume co-curricular and extracurricular activities at the, at the high school per the guidelines of Public Health Madison Dane County. Is there any discussion? Did I, I, I want to be sure, Danny, that I restated your motion appropriately?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
This, this is Leah. I wasn't sure if Kimberly was going to talk. I didn't want to talk over her. I think we've already approved the gradual reopening plan. And the way it's worded, this already fits in. So I feel like the vote's kind of redundant, but, I mean, it already fits in with the gradual reopening plan.
Kimberly? Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Rob, this is Diana. Can I, this is Diana. Can I just clarify that this applies to co-curriculars, including our co-op sports?
That would be correct. There would not be competition because they're team sports. Just only an individualized side, yes.
Thank you.
And to Leah's thoughtful point, if you don't mind me just reflecting on that, one could assume, just as you suggested, Leah, that this would have already been part of the gradual reopening plan. But we don't have anything listed in the GRP that reflects athletics and co-Ex. And so we just wanted to make certain that, that truly was the intent of the board. So we'll find out how much it was. And we would adjust the GRP accordingly.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll, we'll take action on, I want to restate the, the motion just to make sure that we're all clear. Danny has made a motion, I have, it's seconded a motion to resume co-curricular and extracurricular activities at the high school per the guidelines of Public Health Madison Dane County. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The i's have it, the motion carries, and co-curricular and extracurricular activities will resume at the high school per the guidance of the Public Health Madison Dane County. Items 8, 8A, citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments? The number for, for citizen comments is 608-250-9166. If there are no citizen comments, no one once, no one twice, no one three times, we'll move to item nine, future agenda items. You'll see the must've there. Item 10, schedule of next meetings. And item 11, adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Jeff has made a motion to adjourn.
Second, Diana?
Diana has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing the all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed will say no. The i's have it, the motion carries, and we're adjourned. Thank you.